We will call the panel select board. Regular meeting Thursday, May 30th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes, 5:16:13 for the regular meeting and 5:20:13 special meeting. Warrants, mail. Old business, Kathy Foley, RE options for stray dogs. I'd like to add that we do a letter of correspondence to our auditors from a letter that they read to us, May 16th. We have an adoption of conflict of interest policy and a record retention amendment. And I'd like to add two personnel executive sessions at the end of the meeting. And with that, if nobody has anything else.
Motion.
Add a motion, be a second. All in favor? Approval of minutes, 5:16:13.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. 5:20:13 special meeting. All in favor?
Abstain.
Payroll, 5:26:13 in the amount, or 5:26:13, 5:31:13 in the amount of $5,953.94. Counts payable, 5:31:13 in the amount of $21,377.46.
That was your pay, right?
There was a tax refund in there of almost $10,000. That's your large one. Now, we've got some calcium, payroll transfers, lawn mowing. Those are your larger items on that particular list. Counts payable, 5:24:13 in the amount of $25,075.08. Your health insurance is your large one there again. Calcium chloride, about $3,000. Electricity, $7,100. Eats up a pretty good chunk quick. Payroll, 5:19 to 5:24:13 in the amount of $71.6071. Those are your warrants.
Motion.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Just been mailed. We have an excess weight permit from Michael Tatro, Lincoln Road, Stanford Vermont. Our road foreman has seen this and signed it, dated it. Insurance papers are there. What is?
Second.
All in favor? We have a letter from the planning commission addressed to the chairman. The planning commission appreciates the opportunity to work with the select board regarding the appointment and sequential approval of zoning administrator for the next three years. Our original nomination, Nelson Brownell, was unanimous choice, in fact. All planning commission members present voted for Nelson, none other four candidates receiving a single vote. We felt that we felt were all good, well-intentioned applicants, but various reasons not suitable at this time for the task at hand. The planning commission works very closely with the zoning administrator as he counsels and guides us on very variety of topics, including interpretation of the bylaws and helping to devise an appropriate town plan. Nelson has been instrumental in all these functions and will offer his experience in assistance with grant applications, just to name a few things he does well for us. We are very comfortable working with Nelson, asks the select board to reconsider Nelson for three-year more zoning administrator. Have the follow-up letter from him that says also to the chairman, Dear Mr. Copian, your letter to the planning commission, March 29, 2013, you raised concerns regarding enforcement and follow-up by the zoning administrator. The only correction I'd like to say on that out loud is it wasn't just me raising concerns, it was the board, members of the board also raising concerns. We, the planning commission, share your concerns regarding the difficulty enforcing and following up on compliance as we have worked with the current zoning administrator and also begun our review and rewrite the current town plan and bylaws. We find the primary underlying factor impending enforcement is the lack of authorization afforded the ZA by current town plan bylaws and also grandfather clauses of the state. This lack of enforcement power often ties the hands of a ZA. As we rewrite the town plan, one of our focuses is to clearly and strengthen the language where appropriate to empower the zoning administrator with tools needed for effective enforcement and follow through as we look forward for your support in this effort to address a common Do we, at this point, want to handle that particular while we're on the subject?
I suggest we have a full board before we discuss it. I know Rich has a prior commitment, but I think it would be better to have all five people talk about it.
But we shouldn't have a full board on that.
We should have what? My biggest concern at this point is, and it probably doesn't matter a lot. I'd almost like to know the feeling. We've waited, put in here two months now, which I think is highly irregular and not proper, being we had quite a few applicants for this particular position. I don't think it's fair to have four, or five, six applicants out there in nowhereland knowing what's going on. I don't believe it's fair to them. I think we should move on this quicker, this board and the planning board. So, I don't know how we do that unless we get a feel on which way we're going. And if this board is leaning to either nominate or go along with their nomination or reject it, then we should set up some sort of a plan to meet with them and discuss this with both boards. Try to step in stone a little bit further so we're not into July, then into vacation time and whatever.
Right now, let's go on further because we're not on standard ground here. So, if we go do a meeting, I would suggest that we make a motion that we get a meeting set up.
Well, we need to know for which way we're leaning first. Because if we're going to go along with them, we don't need the meeting. But if there is enough thought that we may not be going along with them, then we need a meeting. So, as much as I agree, I'd like to see a full board. It depends what the vote would come up to.
And I honestly believe that we still should go along with our, they were unanimous. That's my opinion. So, I think that, and also, I think that was a good follow-up letter there to say in that part of the enforcement problem is not having enough enforcement in the town plan built in. So, I think we ought to work on that. But, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to go along with the nomination, as my thoughts.
Are you making it as a motion?
Yes, I'm making it as a motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion to go along with the planning commission's nomination. Do I have a second? All right, without hearing that, are we rejecting the nomination? We have a motion, reject it?
Go for it.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion and second?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We need to schedule a meeting with the planning commission as soon as possible to meet and discuss this.
The planning commission's next meeting is June 8th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay. Does that work with everybody here?
Anything on special meeting?
I can do a special joint meeting, but I would need to know the time that we, because we normally meet at 7:00. So, if we were to do a joint meeting, I would at least ask for half an hour, 45 minutes.
Okay, you want to try a special meeting at 6:00? Try for 7:00? What's your pleasure?
Six next Thursday.
Who is holding the meeting?
I would assume that we're going to the planning commission. It's their regular meeting. If they were coming to us, it would be our meeting, but I would assume we're going to them.
I would prefer you guys come to us.
Why judges?
See how easy we are?
We're not easy, but...
You thought we were going to be tough, didn't you?
No.
Okay. Oh, we need the time.
It'll be 6:00.
6:00 okay with your members? 6:00, 6:30?
It would depend. Rich can get there too, because remember, sometimes he closes up shop up there too.
But when are you shooting for a night?
We do Tuesday, June 18th. But I have no problem working with both boards to, you know, take us a different day, time type.
It can be next to us, because next to us is too short, right?
Not if I wanted it. Like, in the morning. But I mean, if you want to meet with Rich, ask him. I can meet with Linda and go over times with her.
It'll take an hour, it's gonna be plenty. We can make it like 6:00 o'clock next Thursday night. And after their meeting, we just come over here.
No, it's not a good idea.
No.
The board won't have ample time to review their own material, to prep yourself for your own meeting.
Yeah, it's true.
And I would prefer you guys came to us.
All right, so the question is...
What about Tuesday then?
The question is, do we want a meeting?
You're talking about 11th of June, Tuesday night?
June 18th, I thought we already said.
I don't think we ought to wait that long.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's three weeks away. That's kind of a, again, a wait. I'd like to see it moved up sooner. Like I say, I have a real issue with the fact we had this many people apply for a position. And we've been two months without giving anybody an answer. And I think that's totally wrong, regardless what position it is. If we ask for somebody to put themselves forward for a job and they do, and then we don't give them an answer, I think we've shown really disrespect on our part for handling this.
June 4th or June 11th?
June 4th, we have our work session meeting and our chairman won't be at that meeting. So, we can try the 11th.
Why don't we shoot for the 11th then? Why don't we shoot for 6:30? Because it's a special meeting that would give Rich time if he's running late at the shop and anybody that's out of town in time to get here. It'd sound like a fair assumption.
Are you guys meeting here too, right?
Sound okay?
Everything.
Everything all set with you guys?
So far.
Okay. So far, we're done with that.
Okay.
Okay. 6:30, we said? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Bye, George.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Ah.
Back to the mail.
We still mail?
Yeah, back to the mail.
We had a pause there for a minute. All right, we got a letter from Jana Sawacki. It says, Dear Town Select Board, Nelson Brownell was just up to our place taking a look at our property lines and road access issues related to the scatter weight sergeant camp permit. We discussed a few issues relating to parking. Our only real concern about the permit, we are concerned about three parking-related issues. We hope that the town will let the sergeants know that they cannot block road access when they park and walk to the camps, difficult space between a road and a fence and a property, parking municipal or multiple cars and trucks curbside. There are little work and a handful of very small trees could be cut down, ground effect for parking, et cetera. We suggest the town requests that they not open, that they not park in the turnaround area across from our house since the town has created area for gas, oilage, garbage, town ambulance, and fire trucks. Because their camp is deep in the woods, it would be too difficult to contract and move cars if a truck comes in and needs to turn around for any reason. Footbridge over the cover and the path is already crumbling. Please make sure that no vehicles, size travel, bridge temporary, or permanent parking. The bridge is too fragile and might collapse. Thanks for your attention. Please do not hesitate to contact us. I'm assuming Nelson has a copy of this letter. Zoning Administrator Log, 5:13. Number of application, six. Number accepted, six. Three verifications, three permits. We have a letter from Tyler Gillis, Miriam and Richardson's lawyers on Hart Gravel Bed. It's the copies of the terms and deposit certificates for filing for the matter with Hart's gravel bed. It's a list of the property owners and the people this letter went to. We have a letter from our listers. Gentlemen, we are waiting documents needed to finalize the grant list abstract for the June 4th deadline. We request your signatures on the attached request for an extension letter to Mr. Johnson Director, Vermont Department of Taxes. Thank you, the board of listers, Barb, Doris and Nikki. So, they've run into a snag which we were notified of a week or two ago. They are asking for an extension.
Motion.
Motion?
Do we have a choice?
Basically, no. Not if it's not there. We need to give them the extension so they can do it.
Well, so I can do that.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Okay, we have a letter received by our...
Can we cross that out?
Received by our administrator assistant from the Federal Energy Regulatory Regulatory Commission. It is a letter to confirm the arrangements made to conduct a dam safety inspection at panel project number 6795VT on February, June 7th, 2013. The site inspection will begin at 10:00 AM at the hydro project located in panel Vermont, North Panel, actually. All project structures will be inspected and operational records should be made available for review upon request. An exit meeting will be held at the end of the inspection to discuss findings as necessary and follow-up actions. And the documentation's list follows. That concludes our mail.
Mom, would you mind if we, the third people?
You get this one.
This is the same thing we did one other time.
When is that?
Friday, June 12th.
Thank you. I didn't see that.
Morning, afternoon?
Morning, 10:00 AM.
I guess so.
Awesome.
So, Ronnie's gonna attend this meeting with me.
Okay, good. Okay, with that, we have old business. We have Kathy Foley, if you slide up to the table. Easier said than done, huh?
It's like, I thought it was going to.
I'm Steve Copian, the chairman of the select board.
It actually is next Friday.
The Obama, Michael Rich.
And Linda, you know. Okay. Welcome. Listen to what you have to say to help lead us in this tunnel a little bit.
I have questions first.
Okay. That's a bad start. I hope you had answers first.
No, I don't, I don't have any answers.
No, that's fine.
But stray dogs, is it a state mandate, town mandate, that they're placed on hold for five days? Dog ordinance?
Yeah, we have it in our dog ordinance, right.
Town one year's ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. And if I were to have a stray dog on my property, who would I call right now? Where would that dog go? What would happen with that dog?
You would hope he went to somebody else's property, because we don't have a dog officer right now. I dealt with that about an hour and a half ago, my mother's property. Luckily, the dog had tags called veterinarian where the tag was. Because they can't have confidentially, tell names out anymore, but gave my name where the dog was. They notified the owners.
And it was...
The owners.
That's the ideal situation, you know, any dog.
Yeah. People need to, at this point, until we have somebody in place, kind of do the right thing to a point until we can get secured in there.
I can give you a little background on me. I've lived in town for seven years. I've been a dog just about all my life. I've worked 10 years for a vet, this vet tech. 20 years I managed this state, New England's town. Where I designed a building, I bred, trained, showed, let her do retrievers. I've also been actively involved in rescue organizations. I have good ties with Territory Rescue. I've probably fostered 100 dogs. I also have good ties with the town of Bennington. I have taken about two dozen of the town of Bennington strays and fostered them till I could find them. I've worked with Berkshire Maine. For the past six years, I've worked at Great Fields Kennel. And then questions, like I said, you know, where would a stray dog go? You know, if you had a dog. And I know you've been talking about options. You know, one, you need an animal control officer. But still, even if you have the animal control officer, where is he going to take a stray dog? Where is it going to be housed if he can't quickly be reunited to his owner?
This is an issue we've run into. Through the years that I've been on the board, two of our animal patrol officers held them on their own property. Probably less than ideal circumstances. And as it turned out, there's been issues through the time. We are exploring right now, using some of our own property to put a temporary holding facility. So, if somebody actually stepped forward for the job, they'd have a place to take these animals that is safe, secure, and temporary, not building a full-scale knockdown kennel. That way, you'd have a holding facility within the town to either at one point take them to Great Fields, take them to Second Chance, or disperse them to a no-kill shelter, or whatever needs to be done. You know, unfortunately, there's all sorts of different things that we get involved in and unpleasant trees, but...
Yeah, I have been in rescue for a long time and there's not happening with all of them.
Not with all of them, right. But it's nice to have a direction at least to start with.
I can offer you, knowing the owner of Great Fields and having worked there, I know one of the issues you've had with taking dogs there, that you can only take them during hours. They're set hours. I, with my contacts, Catherine said she would need to rewrite your contract, but after hours, I can transport the dog to Great Fields Kennels if you decide to go with or in a Great Fields kennel. The only thing with Great Fields kennel, you're going to be charged $15 a day from the time they've come in. At the end of five days, if an owner hasn't come forward, if the owner comes forward, the owner pays all the board and the town pays them. That's the ideal situation. Hopefully, all the dogs are going to be claimed. And I don't think the town has a really huge problem.
It's not a huge, it's just not having the right direction of it.
Yeah.
It makes it larger than what it is.
Yeah.
What happens after the five days?
Well, after the five days, having worked there, and that's how I ended up in town Bennington, at the end of the five days, nobody's come forward. The dog's useless. It's a nice dog after it was vet checked and fully vetted, which luckily, the town of Bennington works with the Bennington Kennel Club, which has some funds, that any dog that they deem adoptable, it's vetted, goes into a foster home. And luckily, we find homes for most of them. If the dog's aggressive, if the dog has other issues that they deem unadoptable, it's taken care of.
That's right. Now, when you say the town of Bennington, if we were using Great Fields, would we be considered under that same clause? It's a nice dog and it's been there five days.
We would need to make contact.
See, I mean, these are questions that we have.
Absolutely. And there's huge liability issues. At the end of the five days, if an owner hasn't come forward, there are huge liability issues. The dog now becomes the property of the town of town. You are the owners, you get to say what happens to your dog. You adopt out a dog that's aggressive and there's fight. You adopt out a dog that turns out that it's ill. There are some liability issues there.
Oh, yeah. Marty, Marty was already on every corner. I guess there would be.
Um, yeah. The best, the best idea, idea is, you know, if the dog is currently unadoptable, you pick it up at the end of five days, but hopefully it has a place to go. You have some rescue organizations that you have good contacts with and it moves on. I know Second Chance, they take what dogs they can, that they do work under a no-kill policy, and when they're full, they close the doors. Berkshire Maine, they have an open door policy and will accept anything that comes in, you know, through the door. But at the end of the day, they have, you know, 50 runs and they have 55 dogs. They have to make a decision of five. I know Berkshire Maine, I, they will take dogs from Vermont, but I think they would rather not.
I know that, yes. We've been there.
Okay.
I mean, this is an unpleasant situation because everybody's aware it's an issue under the trap. But it just, our hands get tied because you get all this and then you get somebody that wants to be nice and try to help, and then you throw the damn legal action at them, like, well, you'll be this and you'll be that. Who the hell has the right money and wants to get involved there?
No one.
I mean, my God, you, somebody tries to do something nice and the next thing you know, you're saying, okay, get your hands up, we're gonna cuff you.
I would, I would love to help in any way I can do. I want to be the animal control officer, you know. I just don't have the energy or... I wanna be the animal control officer, you know, I just don't have the energy or the strength anymore to go out. It's not in... But could I help transport dogs after hours? Yes, I can. Can I help if you build a holding facility, you know, in the town's property? Am I willing to go out and clean dogs and train dogs so that they're better suited to go into a home? You know, if there's a dog that will sit and stay, come, won't jump up on you, chances are they're gonna find a home. If it's an out-of-control doggy, that's probably why it was not...
Yep. And there's exceptions. We've discussed this, and I have, I probably didn't bring it, I've just had a bit too much paperwork to try to remember, but I was in contact with a person this week. No. No. Okay, it's the one paper I didn't bring. Anyways, I've called upstate, and I am getting sent to me, I should have it tomorrow, Monday if I'm late. I can't even remember his name, but anyways, he came down and inspected our last dog officer when there was a complaint filed against him. All right, he's from the state, he came down and looked at the facility, deemed there wasn't an issue. So when I talked to him the other day, he was very content with the way things, our plan was on this temporary holding facility. And, I mean, we all know, it's outside the lines maybe, but if you pick up a pool or a chihuahua in November, you're not gonna put it in a outdoor pen and walk away. You're gonna put it in your shirt pocket and take it home with you, or somebody's gonna take it that night. I mean, come on, somebody's gonna do this. It's not gonna be thrown in there. So this temporary business, until we can get it home, is yes. He was, this particular man, and I apologize for, I was hoping to have the letter, then I could read it off, and I know what I was talking about, but we will have it. He liked the idea of this storage facility with runs in front of him. So it's housing for around five dogs, so somebody like you or anybody else could take an animal there, drop it off, they'd be safe, they'd be secure, have a coop, have a run. And if it had to be transferred to Bennington Great Meadows or whatever, at least you had that drop-off point.
Okay, here's the issue with drop-off. Is this gonna be at the transfer station?
It would be, hopefully, on town property. I'm not sure if we can...
Is there water out there?
There is water, highway department.
Or borders.
Yeah, water would be an absolute must for a kennel building. You know, there's designs in the building, you're gonna build the building in case you get that aggressive dog. There's designs in the indoor/outdoor sections that you can move the dog from one section to the other without touching the dog. Then you can look at that at Great Fields Kennel, you know, how they operate their system. There's a lot of dogs that it's not safe in there.
Now, when you're saying water, we're talking for giving the dogs...
For hosing, cleaning.
See, this is, all right, now we're going past that line again, of this temporary holding the dog or letting the dog run loose. There's a fine line between us protecting the public, which is, I feel, our duty in protecting the animal, and then building a full-fledged shelter. Because when we get into a shelter, none of us here are gonna accept that, because we can't afford it, and the laws we couldn't even begin to scratch with. So what we need, now, what I'm saying, and I'm not, please, don't take me as being crude, we have dog crooks, we have chains, the animals are hooked to it. Now, this man is writing to us, approved this. So if we put a...
It's better than them running loose.
Exactly. So if we put up a fenced-in area, where each dog is fenced separately, and they have their own coop designed separately, it's gotta be a heck of a lot better than being chained to a run.
Absolutely.
And it's more convenient to walk up as a person, open a big door, go into the shed and open a swinging door, and put this dog in his contained area and close it. Now he has coop, he has run. The next dog, same thing, walk in, he doesn't interfere with this dog. Open the door, he goes to his unconfirmed area. It's not a kennel, it's a temporary holding, but it's better than a chain in a coop.
But still, you can have dogs in there, and they're nervous, and they're excited, there is gonna be some mess, it's gonna be a...
Oh, well, certainly, oh, of course, oh, sure. That's, you know, and our animal control officer at that point would be responsible for feeding, watering, and making sure the facility is clean. I mean, he's gonna get paid to go out there. He gets paid when their house is his home, so...
So I guess I'm not really understanding, you know, it sounds like you're gonna have a building that is...
Temporary holding.
But if it's gonna function as a safe area for individual dogs, and you're gonna have the ability to clean up after the dogs, and water the dogs there, you wouldn't need to transfer them to Great Fields Kennel.
Right.
You could do your own.
Right. If we can, through the state and stuff, and this is why I wanna hear from this guy, hopefully tomorrow, because this is from the state, what can we do? What's the minimum we can do that's correct, legal, so we don't get our hands slapped, that works for everybody? And the fifteen dollars isn't the end of the world, because it's not that big of a deal, we're not dealing with hundreds of dogs. The convenience, I'm still a firm believer, if we keep the animal somewhere in this area, it has a better chance. If we have an animal control officer that has hands-on, that particular...
I think it has a better chance if the town of town has its own building, and it doesn't need to be grand, it does not need to be huge.
Exactly.
And I think there's the expertise of contractors in the town, kennel, that a lot of them could come out and do the basics and not cost a whole lot of money.
Exactly. We've actually got the money to do it. What we've got is to get the okay, that it's all right to do it.
Okay.
Well, thanks. Is that accepted?
Well, I...
No, I mean, we've run into this. We've got board members that don't agree with doing this.
You're absolutely right. I believe we should take them to Great Fields, if you got a nice dog, and get some contacts, like you were just talking, these different places, try to, and you've got people like you that'll volunteer a little time or whatever, and if a dog is a good dog, I think we could find a place for it in five, six days.
Yes.
But why should we be bothering with the dog on our own property and opening all these other things and go and trying to find, commit to all the rules and regulations? Somebody is gonna be coming around watching us. They always do. And I think a professional place like that, and fifteen dollars, we're gonna spend it? Why not spend it there? I've... This one question I have, at Great Fields, they had people come out there to look for dogs, strays, or is that just a holding place to put them to Berkshire?
Great Fields Kennel is strictly a boarding, training, it has a little retail shop in the front. They are not a veterinarian, you know, they don't find homes for dogs. It's strictly, they're gonna care for the dog that's in there.
Boarding it.
Yeah.
Would you, on the same token, if we had a facility like that, would you be interested in helping? I think you mentioned something like that, of just...
I would have to think any way I could.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, I think there's more people out there, if we had a facility set up where people could grow whatever.
I'll continue some of my thoughts on, you know, the benefits of Great Fields. You don't have to take care of the dog, you know, nobody's, if it's at the town property and people are coming by, there's gonna be people that, if the dog runs messy at all, they're not taking care of it. I work with enough dogs that some of them are just impossible. So there are gonna be people who, no matter how immaculate your kennel is kept, they're gonna be those, oh, they're not doing a good job. If the kennel is someplace where the public is driving by all the time, yeah, it might increase the dogs finding a home, but I think it would also increase the drop-offs. Oh, we could take the dog and get it rid of it if they've got that facility there. So I think there would be more dogs than your rate of stray dogs would go up. You'd come in in the morning and you'd find them, you know, tied to the gate. Or the gate, or...
I was gonna say, the gate, because they wouldn't be accessible to get in there. I'd hope to think that was wrong, but listen, we live in the real world, you know, I'm not gonna argue that point with you.
You know, if it were a perfect world...
Yes, we wouldn't have the problem anyways.
We wouldn't need an animal control officer. Every owner would be responsible for their pets.
Yes, and their kids, like everything else in the world.
Well, yes.
But we're gonna have an animal control officer, irregardless, somehow.
The next question is, you know, where, yes, you need an animal control officer.
So I mean...
The next question is, where are the dogs gonna be housed? Are you gonna have another animal control officer who's willing to house them on his property?
Yes and no. Again, the way the town is set up, there's certain parts of the town that they can't, it's not allowed. So if you lived in the building, and you said, geez, I'll be our animal control officer, and I'll house them in my yard, and you can't. So that blocks you out. So there's a person that wants to do it, that can't do it. This is why we're opening up the fact, if we had a piece of property in this place, this opens the spectrum up, that somebody that wants to do it, that doesn't have a facility, that would adequately do it, they could do it. And maybe they could shop them at the same time. Our last animal control officer did go out of his way on many occasions to find no-kill shelters and places to go.
Okay.
And that's, that's one of the benefits he did do. I will compliment him on that.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that's something that I think was a really, it's kind of a nice thing.
He picked up a dog from my property, which is a beautiful, nice dog, obviously well cared for, had an out-of-state vet's tag, he did everything he could on the owner of that dog, and he did not. And he did take that dog. He kept in contact with me, because I asked him, you know, let me know what happens to the dog, and he did, and he did get it into a shelter.
And, you know, going to Great Fields, I think they do a great job, but we're still facing five days with that nice dog. What do you do? It comes back to us as our responsibility. If it's gonna come back to us, we've reinvented the wheel again, let's handle the thing in the beginning and try to do it right and go forward.
I was saying, you either need to have a plan of foster homes or contacts, that hopefully people get a dog into a rescue organization or a shelter as quickly as possible, or the hard choice is, if you have the five days, it goes to live in the kennel.
Yep.
To have a nice dog, I think that's what we should do.
Oh, absolutely.
We should get our network out and get, you know, every, a lot of people love animals.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure we could get some help, rather than worrying about a place to house them. And if you got a nice dog, we don't have a tremendous amount of dog problems. We have one once in a while, and you ask, or something, and you get a dog that is unadoptable, well, it has, we have to break the bullet.
Yes.
You know, I mean, if it's a pit bull, mixed thing, it's half rabid, it's got all kinds of diseases, you can't do anything with an animal like that.
Yeah, that's another thing with Great Fields Kennel, if the dog is ill in any way, they will not accept it.
That's right.
It will have to go to the vets.
Right.
And then again, you're talking the vets to work and treat the dog for the five days.
Right. That's why I say, we're wiser, I believe, and I'm gonna let, each one of you guys butt in anytime you want, but let me just hold the floor. I believe it's our job, it's our duty, to make some sort of a movement for this, to make a place, we don't have a lot of dogs, knock on wood, that have this problem, but if we have one, we sure should be doing something to take care of the problem. And right at the moment, we don't. The last few months, it's been iffy on how to take them, where to take them, what to do, and it got, the biggest problem is not having a proper place to take them. And we've been stumbling on that, and I think if we can get through these guidelines of putting them into a place where a person could actually do this, it'd be easier on them. We get calls, I get calls, everybody on this board, I'm sure, gets a call. I got a dog in my yard, what do I do with it? Luckily, I've only had one that we lost, because it was injured, we didn't find the owner, and that was sad. But just last winter, we had one, and luckily, within probably about four hours' time, between the owner calling me and me calling Steve and a couple of things going around, they were back together, and that was great. A good owner will look for their animal...
Oh, absolutely.
But they need a place to look, and I think taking it out of town, unless everybody's well-versed, it's a poor move. We need it locally. We need to have it set up as close to the edge of, yes, we got it, but it's just. And that's what this gentleman's supposed to be sending me. What do we need? What's the minimum we can get away with without building a dog kennel? Because we're not building a dog kennel. I mean, I'm hoping someday somebody will, then it'll be their problem, and we'll feed them.
You're, yeah, I think you're splitting hairs here, because if you're gonna have a building that's gonna house five dogs individually, you have that kennel.
Well, I'm not gonna call it a kennel.
You have, um, Town Williams Town has got a very, I oughta say, the bare metal, it's here, it's a transfer station, and it's a little wood building, and it's got the chain link, like that, Town of Lanesboro, behind their town hall, is another rule, as you'd say, holding facility. I don't know about the heat, I don't even think those places are needed.
Town of Rose has got two dog groups in a probably ten-by-ten cage. So I mean, this is, everybody's talking kennels, state laws and all this, and I'm looking at all these things, none of these pass that. So why are we building, you know, a Taj Mahal, or told we got it? I don't believe we do. I believe we need to have a place to take them. And if we can chain them to a post, with a dog group sitting somewhere on that area, we sure oughta be able to put up a nice building, that they have a better shelter and a run in front of them. I mean, I just...
Yeah, I...
Maybe I should've stayed in the sixth grade for another year or two, but I think this pass is okay.
Listen, I want you to clarify there, that it's a boarding, Great Fields is a boarding, do people actually come there if they're missing their dog?
There are a lot of people that come there if they're missing their dog. They, they know that that's where a lot of dogs are born. And actually, I'll be honest, there's a lot of town dogs who go to Great Fields. People pick them up in the town of town, and they would take them to Great Fields, because they would not drop them off here.
Yep.
And very quickly, we found the owners, usually within hours, they were coming out to collect their dogs. They do have to have, you know, proof of license and proof of race before they can claim their dog, and they have to pay in Austin, Perth.
Yep. We need to improve the way we operate. And the way we operate, we need to improve with the facility. It makes it easier for the person doing it, also. I think we can do it.
Oh, I, I know.
I have faith in it, like I said...
The only way to improve is to get started.
Right. And we're just...
You could start and have a holding facility, just go to Tractor Supply and buy one of those chain-linked dog kennels and put in a plastic crate in there, you know, one of those dog eagles, and you've got a holding facility.
Yep. You're gonna spend probably around six to eight hundred dollars. I thought we had one. We've got a ten-by, ten-by-ten.
Right. Regular dog, the dog thing, like this, how it Tractor Supply.
Right, ten-by-ten.
That's right, that's enough.
One dog.
That's right, we're not going out and picking up everybody's dog in town, are we?
But what if you get two? What do you do then?
We're gonna get a stray, but we'll take the other one right to Great Fields direct. And we'll also, if we do get an animal control officer, and we allow him to do that, then, you know, his number, we'll have it out there, this is the guy you call. you know, his number, we'll have it out there, this is the guy you call. The last dog officer we had, he put up all kinds of things around town, telling people what he had. So I don't find an issue with that. I do find an issue with us harboring them somewhere, and I agree totally with Kathy that you encourage people to drop them off also. I know, and I believe in reality. In this town, the Town of Bennington does not have a kennel. Don't they take them to Great Fields? They got a bigger tax base than we have.
And at the end of five days, the dog officer comes back and collects the dog.
Right.
And if she has no place for her to go, he goes to live in the dog's house. That's just the whole reality of it.
Right.
It's not that anybody wants to do it.
No, that's right. And if you had a real nice dog, I'm sure the dog officer would be working pretty hard with all their contacts to say, hey, look, I got this little mixed dog, or I got, or I got even this big lovable Labrador, loves everybody, you know, somebody will want it.
No, I think there's enough of us out there, myself included, you know, I would love to help any way I can. I would love to, if there's a nice dog, and it'll work, you know, with my back, I would certainly bring it in as a foster until I could get it into a rescue.
See, this is what we reached out for a couple of weeks ago, and I think this has probably brought you in, and I appreciate that, because I think there are people out there that would do that.
Oh, absolutely.
We need to get our wheels out of the sand and start a direction. And I'm a firm believer, I disagree with Ryan, if we're gonna hold one, we might as well hold two or three, at least be prepared to. Because there's not a lot of difference whether we hold one or two.
The temporary holding facility for seventy-five percent of the dogs for nine months in a year, that chain link fence and that doggy glue are gonna be absolutely fine with. So you would need, and I think that a dog would have a better chance if the Town of Town Hall did have some kind of holding facility. I think we probably would give the dog, if it were a nice dog, a little bit longer. It would be up against that old state law.
Exactly.
And I also, as a taxpayer, I know how quickly the bills can add up. But it's...
But it's, again, it's a judgment call in this, and we have, we don't have a lot of money toward this, but we have enough money to do a shed. We have enough money to put up a run setup, so they're contained in a safe environment. If it doesn't work, we end up with a shed, and take the fence and put it around garbage cans. I mean, it's not the end of the world, but it's a good effort to try to do it. What we need now is the okay that we can do it on a piece of property. And that's our next step after we get this letter from the guy that was down and inspected us the last time.
It sounds crazy.
And then we have the direct, well, we're trying to get a direction, but what you are offering is what I'd like to see from the public, public input, because it makes a difference.
Oh.
It will help us tremendously if there's hands out there working with us. And that's, that's what will make this work.
And if you want to transport your dog to Great Fields after hours...
Okay, that's excellent to note, especially in the current conditions.
Yeah.
And as a, yourself as a taxpayer, and a person who works at Great Fields, what would your recommendation for the town be?
There's pluses and minuses. I honestly, it really balances out, I think. I think the town can do just as well with a small building, some chain link fence. There are some things I would think would be worth the money to add to the building. You know, a cement pad for ease of cleaning, I've seen dogs...
I think we're talking about that.
I think dogs can dig through any amount of gravel. Cement block versus wood, you know, on the outside, I have seen dogs digging through just about anything, this wood, things where you wouldn't think they'd be able to chip. Dogs can climb fences and go over. If you don't have the outside runs capped, I think there's gonna be a higher likelihood of, oh, they're dropping dogs in. Pluses of, you know, it's visible, people see the dogs that are there, they're aware of them, they're more likely to get adopted, but also, they'd be more likely to bring their dog there if they didn't want it. I know where to get here to the town. I, I think if the town had its own facility, they'd give the dogs longer. But initial costs upfront would be much higher in setting up the building, but in the long run, I think it would eventually pay for itself, because you're not paying Great Fields seventy-five dollars for every, you know, stray dog that you pick up.
We got the money already in the accounts to build it. It was approved several years ago. It's just sitting there.
And it opens a door, you know, we get somebody, again, locally, that may take the job ordinarily. With, um, the building part, I like, because you could keep certain things in the building, which isn't where the dogs are, part of it's for the dogs, but the other part would be for supplies or whatever, just something for maintenance, cleanups, leashes, I don't know, but something that, you know, somebody wouldn't have to come there and bring something all the time, that you'd have a certain amount of stuff, like a little workshop, so.
Do you have her number, in case we need her until we get things working?
I can get some pictures of the kennel that I designed. The inside of the building is literally the ten by ten of a horse stall. Because it was, it used to be a horse stall, and it was renovated into a dog kennel. I had three runs, and it walked in the door, and had the doors to the three runs. And the inside portion is just big enough for them to, they can move around. I had platforms in there for them to lay on, and they could also lay the cement, but it wasn't that huge of an area. And they had a door that I could open, and they could go outside. And again, the outside area doesn't need to be that big.
No, just so they get outside, right.
It's a temper.
Yes. There's regulations on the size of the inside configuration.
I'm sure there are.
Yep.
And I would...
Even for the temporary...
I would, whatever you had to do, that's what I would do.
Yes.
But just some little shelves, you know, and where you could have some towels, blankets...
Yep, and that's why I said, that's why the storage shed's ideal.
Anything or whatever for the, you know, dog food.
Yep.
Your clean disinfectant supplies, a hose. And there you're set. You're good.
Okay.
It sounds like everybody's kinda on the same page. We all wanna do the same thing, find homes.
I'm glad you can't, because I thought we had a sampler of the contract at Great Fields. And I was looking at it, and it had the hours that they wouldn't accept the animals.
They have their hours that they're open?
Exactly. And this is my main concern, what are we gonna do if the ASO picks up something that, they're not gonna start taking it?
At midnight?
Yeah.
And you have to, you have to pull onto this dog who is gonna chew your house up? Yeah.
Or don't get along with your pet horse, whatever. It's not a good setup.
Metal thing with the, with the little igloo in it would be just perfect. Put it in there and then take it there to follow them along.
That would work too. So there are options. Pluses and minuses to vote, and anything I can do to help, I'm willing.
Sounds like you've got the magic key to get in there at night, you know?
We appreciate that, and I hope all people do.
I don't, I don't think she's changed the code, so I think I could still probably get in. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and hopefully, we will be moving forward very soon.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we do have some applications sent to us. Did everybody look at those that were in our files that we do have?
Yeah.
I didn't see none.
There are a file folder, and it probably should be reviewed in the executive session.
Okay. We can do that. What I was gonna do is have people come in and, on an interview at a certain time, but we can review that in an executive.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Okay. The only thing that we had before since open business, as far as I'm concerned, was maybe our auditors come in with a letter, with a questionnaire, and a whole bunch of articles that they wanted answers to. I was gonna try to actually answer some of them tonight, because reading them over and looking at them more thoroughly after the meeting, I wasn't pleased with some of the stuff I saw. And again, reiterate the fact that some of these questions that were asked, I don't believe is an auditor's position to start with, which we've discussed many times. But other than getting into that at this point, what I would like this board to do is nominate somebody from this board to work with Linda to write these things down and the answers to this particular questionnaire that we got, and send them a copy of the answers. We request, they requested, we'll send it to them in the third meeting, when they show up, we will discuss it when they are here.
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
And we've had meetings with them for three, two or three times now, and we have requested information be sent to the board, laid in front of us, so that we can monitor that and look at it and make a decision accordingly. And three times, two or three times, it's been a washout. So I would like to make a motion that any further correspondence with the auditors be on a condition that any meetings that we have with them, they're not going to be, come forthcoming with the said stuff that they did be canceled right then.
Well, according to what they said at our last meeting with them, is that they were no longer going back, that they were working forward.
On the other hand...
Right, if that's the case, that's fine. Then we should be working on current...
Because then you're sick and tired of coming in here and listening to the...
Right. We've asked several times now, in this last meeting that they came into, they were supposed to bring us their documentation that they had on their findings on these errors that resulted in these funds that they found.
Oh, yeah.
With the proof on it. And all we got was forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars scribbled on the back of a piece of paper held up.
You said it was not sophisticated.
With no proof on where the figures come from or how. I don't consider that extremely professional, and it sure as hell isn't what we asked for when we asked them to come in. And that was the third time we've asked them to come in with this information.
As a concern, stick with that.
Now, the only thing I'm interested in at this point, and I think you've touched on this a little bit, is we have, they said they've gone other directions, or gone to another avenue or whatever direction. The only thing I would like to know, if there's been correspondence sent to some other facility, state labor laws, labor associations, or whatever, that we certainly should have documents of that before it was sent to these other places, or at least copies of them that were sent elsewhere.
Definitely.
Being we are the governing body of this town and it involves us. It's, has been documentation sent on stuff that we have requested from this board, and we have not received it, and somebody else has.
If they have done now, is there anybody, any way you could probably sue against them for doing it?
I'm not sure. We'd have to find out if the documentation is...
We can sue against us in two seconds.
I know. We need to know if documents have been sent, and I think what we'll do is find out eventually if they have been, and then we'll find out why we don't have copies, and then we can check it at that point.
Because those are secret public documents, right?
Right.
So we should have a copy of those public documents in front of us.
Yes. If we're being accused of something or not doing something, we should have that paperwork. And if somebody else gets it, we sure have first, so. With that said, what I need is a motion for somebody to work with Linda on a letter of their questions that they had. That was the original speech that I started on.
This sounds good. Can we get somebody?
I'm busy right now. I've got two more policies in there.
Heck, yeah, I work during the day.
I might be retired, but it still doesn't mean I don't do something.
Um, I've got it half-written, do you want me to work with her?
Okay, make a motion.
I'll make it in a second, bud.
At this point, it doesn't matter, we gotta do it. You know, they've asked for it, I think we should answer it. Okay. I will work with you next week, we will jot this letter together with the questions, so they have it for their meeting before us. New business, adopt a con...
Gonna vote on that?
Okay, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The conflict of interest policy, that's our next thing. Everybody had a chance to peek that over a little bit? And voice your discussion? You're the only one, the word that had to be changed, we had to put an officer up there, right? Public officer.
It's on page three.
Yes, page three.
Yep. Seven one, yeah, we need to edit that, uh... When it's redone, if that can be retyped, that can be added without a problem. It's right here on page...
Page three, the third line, where it says appointed public, needs to say officer. Third line down, case public officer is appointed to public matter, which appointed public officer, needs officer added.
Mine says officer.
You use those?
In case of a public officer.
No, no, we need to be in the word.
See, when we go over here to public, it just says public shall, it's a public should be officer on the end of that.
And here, officer.
Well, no, no, it shouldn't.
Public officer.
Yeah, it shouldn't. Read that again. Pointed that the public shall have the authority to order that officer to recuse himself. So it shouldn't have officer in there.
Okay.
Right, this, that, cross that. There. That was a whole lot of nothing. We did three times to get it round four. Okay. Are we happy? We ready to vote? We wanna...
Make the motion that we approve this.
This motion made in the second to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
We got a message back from Trevor Lewis up in Macquarie.
Could you bring that thing a little closer to you, Dale? I can hardly hear you, so I'm sure nobody else can hear you out there.
John is here.
Yeah. No, he's saying people on here may not hear him.
No, I can hear that.
Okay, you can, okay.
Okay, good enough.
We received a little note from Trevor after his review of this, and we had his answer back by email. back by email on, on the twenty-second. And there was two, two very small things that, some of it was overlooked by Reed's and what have you. But on the first page, there says agreements. We had to, it said retain until expired plus, let's do a mispronounce, it said two years, but he said it should be three years and then it gets archived. That's been corrected. Um, the second one is on page two, going down where it says reports. It said retain until year end plus three years. And that was left blank and he brought that out. And it said, said to archive. So, that would say retain until three, three years end, or year end, excuse me, and three years, and then archive.
Then archive.
Those are the only two things that, uh, was mentioned in his, uh, his memo on the twenty-second. So, the corrections have been finished and so we are up to snuff.
Okay. So, what would the board's pleasure be on the records retention amendment?
I will make the motion to accept this as, as policy.
I have a motion to accept it as policy in a second?
I don't know if it's time now, but last time we talked about it, I brought up a thing about getting rid of it, burning it, all the other records.
Oh, 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 exposing them.
Or not. But they will no longer do that.
Okay.
But, uh, my parents just had a shredding, a shredding day. Paperclips, uh, anything, go right through it, you ain't gonna take them off. So, if you're gonna dump ours in, they go right through it. Staples, paperclips.
Okay, so we, all we have to do is...
When that time comes, we know how to do it then. Okay, we have a motion and a second on our retainment, retention amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we have three different executive sessions that we need to go into. So, the first one will be involving our animal control officers.
Make a motion, go on, executive session, animal control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.